Yeah, you mean Scott? Yeah, his wife is.
Be loaded for mayor next time, Governor.
Good afternoon. We will call the September 16, 2019 Salina City Commission meeting to order. Gavro call, please.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges. Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here. Thank you. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on one accord, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations this morning, this afternoon.
Item 3.1, the month of September 15th through October 15th, 2019, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Salina, Julia Ramos will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Whereas since our founding, our nation has drawn strength from the diversity of our people. With faith and passion, a sturdy work ethic, and profound devotion to family, Hispanics have helped carry forward our legacy as a vibrant beacon of opportunity for all. Whether their ancestors have been here for generations or they are among the newest members of our American family, they represent many countries and cultures, each adding their own distinct and dynamic perspective to our country's story. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month, whose roots go back to 1968, begins each year on September 15th, the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, with other Latin American countries also celebrating their independence during this period. In celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month, we honor the contributions Hispanics have made throughout our history, and we highlight an important part of the rich diversity that keeps our community strong. And whereas Hispanic Americans have had a lasting impact and have helped drive hard won progress for all of our people, they are the writers, singers, and musicians that enrich our arts and humanities, the innovative entrepreneurs steering our economy, they are the scientists and engineers revolutionizing our ways of life and making sweeping new discoveries, the advocates leading the way of social and political change, they are the brave men and women in uniform who commit themselves to defending our most cherished ideals at home and abroad. And their lasting achievements and devotion to our nation exemplify the tenacity and perseverance embedded in our national character. And whereas our nation's remarkable story began with immigration, it is imperative to embrace our diverse history so that all adults and children can see themselves in our nation's past and know that they have a crucial role to play in its future. And whereas, as we reflect on the countless ways in which Hispanics have contributed to our nation's success, let us reaffirm our commitment to expanding opportunity and building on even brighter futures for all. Let us embrace the diversity that strengthens us and continues to strive to ensure the American dream is within the reach for generations to come. Now, therefore, I, Trent W. Davis, have authorized and issued a proclamation designating September 15th through October 15th, 2019, as Hispanic Heritage Month. And I call upon all citizens of the city of Salina to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 16th day of September, 2019. Trent W. Davis, Mayor.
Thank you. So that's 30 days of education and celebration.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us what we can look forward to for the next 30? Well, 29 days now.
There are no specific activities that we're aware of at this time. The street fair is going to have, one of their tables is going to be showing papel picado, which is an artistic decorative form in Latin America. And I believe they will have a history as far as the background of where it comes from and how it's kind of played a role over the years, as well as a demonstrator showing people how they can do it if they so choose to learn how to do that. I also know that there may be other activities coming up, and we'll make sure to make sure that we can get that on calendars necessary so that the community is aware of how they can participate within this month. There will also be a board in the hallway soon, hopefully by tomorrow, that will have information as far as which are the Hispanic cultures and countries that are represented for this month.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll give you a signed copy of the, or the signed original.
Item 3.2, the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week in the city of Salina, Melissa Stutzlich, Regent of the Local Daughters of the American Revolution, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the 1787 Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to record official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of this great country, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, Trent Davis is Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina to be affixed this 16th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2019. And sign, Trent Davis, Mayor of Salina.
Thank you. Are there any activities to help us remember our history? I was doing the math, and folks talk about us moving slow, but it was three years between the Constitutional Convention and the framing, so.
It was a tremendous type of years, too.
And they weren't doing it with Facebook or...
No, it was not.
Television either.
Across the states, the Daughters will be trying to get everyone to sound the bells. Three o'clock in Central Time, it'll be four o'clock, of course, Eastern, and we'll be doing that across the world. And so we're hoping to remind people about the Constitution. They are having displays in various libraries across the state. We haven't had as much success with the bell ringing in Salina, but you would hear them in some of the outlying community. So we do hope to try to get a little bit more of that recognition as our Constitution is constantly being questioned and learned, and that's our big goal, is to learn the Constitution. So there will be some education things out there in the different schools.
Come back and test the folks in the audience.
There you go. I have some of those.
Right. Let me give you this. Signed, Pro.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that. All right, we can now move to the Citizens Forum. If there's anyone who wishes to address the Commission on any item not on the agenda, feel free to come to the podium and be asked that you speak for no more than five minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Joan Ratslove, Salina. I wasn't planning on coming today, but I was kind of being lazy on my computer at home, and I read what looks like some good news on Facebook from the Salina Journal, saying that the Saline and Salina Commissions were meeting to discuss the future of the Expo Center. That was today at 12:30. So that sounds like really good news. It didn't really say any, you know, didn't really give us any news, but what caught my eye was that you guys met. So that's a good thing, except that as a public meeting, it should have had public notice under COMA. And it doesn't seem to have happened. So...
I know we did.
I will say that this is a recurring problem with where there are special meetings, study sessions, things like that, and it has been brought to the attention of the city manager's office. As those of you know who were at the strategic planning meeting a year and a half ago, which, you know, I'm to receive public notice, or notice of public meetings under COMA because I've requested them. And it's the city practice to send those by email, which is very convenient. It's a very nice way to keep your citizens informed. So, but even since that time, I'm going through this because it demonstrates the need for COMA and CORA training every year, at least, you know, or for new employees, some kind of regular training on that topic. I still hear staff refer to study sessions as not an official meeting. Well, yes, they are. They're official meeting, they're subject to Open Meetings Act, and the same would apply to today's meeting. So I just want to ask you to direct your city management to, you know, see what they can do to improve that. Because citizens' involvement is important. And when we're, when the law is not followed as regards to that, it makes one feel, or it can make one feel, that the citizens are considered more of an interference than being valued.
We'll try to get you an explanation on short order.
Yes, I fully understand that it's a public meeting. I was under the impression notice went out, but we'll track it down.
I thought we got a press release on that.
I thought so, too, but I'll double check.
I believe I also saw it on Salina Media, on their advertisement page, so.
Yeah, I'll double check.
Thank you.
I'm short. My name is Diana Markley, and I'm here because as a senior citizen, I've been living at the Marketplace Apartments down on South Ninth for about 12 years now. And I don't know who is coming up with these ideas, but someone is trying to take out trees that have been there for 30 years, that give the senior citizens there a lot of shade, a lot of oxygen, and some of us are on oxygen over there. And they want to move the trash. I don't know if you've ever driven through Marketplace Apartments, right across from Conklin Cars, right next to where they're putting the new car wash in. So I know you know the area. Anyway, they're talking about taking the trash bin, which is in the center of our parking area, and there's a circle around it where people come in, the front drive, then they drive around where the trash bin is. And there's also a place under a tree or two there that some of our smokers are able to go outside and sit down and have a cigarette. They're not allowed to smoke in the apartments anymore, although they used to, and I don't know how the grandfather clause works for that, but they're being very mean to smokers who, of course, after a few cigarettes, it's not their fault anymore with the drugs that were put in the cigarettes. Anyway, so they are talking about taking out trees which help us breathe better, and they give us shade, and already, even though I have some help, I am considered low income because I haven't been, or rather, stayed married. I've been married a total of one year and two marriages. So basically, I've been single my whole life, and I'm 78 years old right now. And I have been working since I was 10 years old. I've traveled the world and had multiple jobs, multiple occupations. I love to learn. I'm interested in everything. So consequently, I have a little more experience than a lot of the elderly people who live there next to me. Some of them are quite ill, and I know you know as well as I do that every tree gives tremendous amount of oxygen back, and all it takes from us is our carbon dioxide. And so many trees have come down now in the Salina area in the last few years. I have been watching, I listen to the weather every single morning, and our temperature averages between two and three degrees hotter than any neighboring town. I'm talking about right on our center area. And I mean, I would expect it to be different in Kansas City with the river, and Wichita and all that, and Nebraska, but I'm talking about our area. So I am very concerned about all the trees that have been removed from Ninth Avenue, and I am really getting upset about the ones they're trying to remove now from Marketplace Apartments. And they do want to move the trash that's normally in the center of the parking lot, which is convenient to everybody who lives there. What they're talking about now is putting it within 20 feet of my apartment. And not just my apartment, there's about six or eight other people. So they want to take it from the center, where it's surrounded by cars, it's convenient for everyone, and they want to take out two glorious trees that everybody sits under in the summertime. And from my point of view, I live facing west, so I get morning sun when it hits a certain angle, I get all afternoon, and I get late afternoon. Needless to say, my electricity bill is extremely high. We get help with our electricity or power and stuff, and I get leap every year, but it still costs me about $100 a month for, well, about 75 for electricity and 25 for gas. So I'm just wondering, do you allow apartment buildings? I haven't looked at the laws here locally, and I am going to be looking them up more about what you allow apartment buildings to do and apartment projects. Because we are, I think, in six different buildings, so they all surround, I think they have like eight units in six or so, well, we have something like 32 people living there.
Do you know who the "they" is that's doing this?
It's Volunteers of America are the company, is the company that actually owns it. And they are under HUD restrictions, and they're focused on the elderly, the handicapped, and of a certain age limit can get in younger if they have handicaps. And this is just, it seems like every time we're turning around, they're taking something away. And it's, to me, it's health things they're taking away and beauty things. You want to live with some beauty when you're in your elder years. I mean, I want it to my whole life. But when I first moved in there 12 years ago, there were a lot more bushes, and there were several more trees than even now. And now they're talking about taking out 40-year-old trees that give us tremendous amount of shade and protection.
Who, which department would be able to help that? We don't know if they're being taken out for safety reasons, whether the trees are diseased, or that does not come through this commission.
Okay, oh, okay.
Just trying to see who we might be able to steer you to, to get some answers.
We have a city arborist that assesses the health of trees, but we don't, I'm not aware of any regulations that would require them nor prevent them from removing the trees. I mean...
Because it's private property?
Correct.
So then it's just really up to all of us there to complain a lot. Now, they also want to put in parking for six more parking places. Now, I have lived there 12 years, like I said, and my next-door neighbor has lived there for 18 years. We have never, in all these years, seen a necessity to add more parking spaces because of people dying or going to the hospital or just different things. Some of them don't, you know, when they get up to our age, they just don't own cars anymore. And mine's even an antique. I just got a tag for it the other day. But what I'm saying is, they don't need any more parking places, and they're talking about putting six parking places where now the trash bin is convenient in the middle. And I don't know, is there anything you can do to help? Because I didn't know where to go to look for help, other than organizing a bunch of people that don't have any extra money to hire an attorney to really fight for us on this cause. And do you have any suggestions?
Might be able to contact the owner to at least explain to you what's going on.
They're having a meeting on October the 1st, and they are taking our complaints and going to talk with us about it.
I don't want to advocate radical street action from the podium here, but back in the 70s, there was something called the Gray Panthers. And you may have to form a local chapter.
Probably as many of you that live there attending would be a good thing.
Rally the troops.
Rally the troops.
Get as many of your homeowners there or people there and have them go to that meeting, make sure they voice their opinion, tell them the way you feel, and, you know.
Well, we're going to do that. I just didn't know if there was something legally or some rule you had within the city street, because they had talked about putting in extra parking right off of Marketplace before, and they said the city won't let us do it. And we figured it was probably because there were electrical lines or something underneath that was right along Marketplace Street. But we've come up with the idea now of maybe having more parking opposite where they always already have parking right in the entrance, but not taking our trash away from the middle where some of us have a great deal of trouble walking, some of us less. I try to get an exercise as much as I can, but I have a handicap tag also.
Well, I think definitely good advice to show up at the meeting in force and...
Well, just want you to know...
We can get some information sent out to you ahead of time.
We all think we're out there doing the best we can, but thank you. At least, I guess my is too on the law library from somebody else. So thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Mr. Mantle.
Norman Mantle, Salina, Kansas. Earlier here in this meeting room to the north, the issue of water was brought up. Water is very important in this country-state. And the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks and Tourism has listed lakes, small bodies of water in the state of Kansas that are under a hazard warning. The blue-green algae issue, Lakewood is on one of them. Milford Lake is another one on them. The lake up by Agra, up in northeastern Kansas, on them. This blue-green algae will kill life, and that includes humans, dogs. So is the city even looking at that, trying to remedy that?
We're in direct contact with KDHE. There's different stages of assessment that they do. We then post notice and tell people that they should stay out of the water and post a warning. KDHE does not have any immediate solutions. There are some treatments in small bodies of water, but in larger bodies of water, it's kind of a life cycle for the algae that has to pass, and so we post it until it's passed.
Another issue KD has with these small lakes, you stock trout out here in this lake. You need to, well, it'd be up to their authority to issue citations. People are coming out there, and they're catching their limit of trout, and then they take them home to come back and buy, catch some more in the same day. So has the city got any jurisdiction over this lake? It's their property.
To my knowledge, we don't have rangers dedicated to enforcing that issue.
Okay. But I just thought that's something you guys ought to keep your eye on, this, that stuff will kill you.
Just keep the redos short.
Yes.
Shorter than five minutes.
Yes, sir. I wanted to express my appreciation for Ms. Markley's comments and ask you if we don't already have one, which I have not heard of one, and I've kind of looked for a policy or ordinance regarding trees. I know we have our strategic plan, talks about a beautiful city and, you know, environment and all this, but I haven't seen where we are really paying attention to our street trees. And like she said, it's a valuable asset to make our city look nice, feel nice, and so, you know, maybe that's something that you guys could take up.
And we do have a tree policy, to the extent it extends on private property, and a tree committee, that's true.
Correct. We do have a street tree ordinance, and we have regulations about damaged trees and the care and maintenance of trees, but I'm not aware that that ordinance extends into the interior of an apartment complex and prevents them from removing trees.
Well, again, I would encourage you to take up that issue and, you know, without being over regulatory, you know, thinking about the best interest of our whole town. Thank you.
Certainly, probably that's something that we read on a monthly basis, I'll be honest with you. But should be good reading. Anyone else? If not, we will move on to the, we have no public hearings, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 9th. I have 16th on here. September 9th, 2019, and item 6.2, adopt resolution number 19-7740, amending fees and the comprehensive fee schedule related to the Smoky Hill River Festival admission price.
Any commissioner want either item pulled for a separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda, amending the notation of the minutes of the 16th as the 9th.
Second. We moved in second to approve the consent agenda with the correction as noted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. We will now move to development business.
Item 8.1, acceptance of a public sidewalk easement dedication on the north side of Ash Street adjacent to the Alley Entertainment Center.
Mr. Andrew, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the offer to dedicate a public sidewalk easement in front of the Alley Entertainment Center on the north side of Ash Street. And as part of the downtown streetscape project, there was a recessed drop-off area that you may have seen that was constructed along the north side of Ash Street. As a result of the width of this drop-off area, portion of the public sidewalk located on the north side of Ash Street had to be constructed on private property that's owned by the Alley Entertainment Center. So the managing member, Kathy DiSocio, has agreed to dedicate to the city a permanent sidewalk easement for that portion of the public sidewalk that occupies their property. And this is a little unusual in the downtown areas because on the Ash Street side, they're building a setback 12 feet and 18 feet from Ash Street, whereas most buildings down building is set back 12 feet and 18 feet from Ash Street, whereas most buildings downtown sit right on the property line. So your options this afternoon would be to accept that offered easement dedication and authorize the mayor to sign the easement document, or you could accept it subject to certain conditions that you think are appropriate. You could postpone consideration of this item if you think you need additional information to be provided by staff, or you could decline to accept the offered sidewalk easement. Staff would recommend alternative one, acceptance of the easement and authorize the mayor to sign the easement document.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the public? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Davis, I move we accept the offered sidewalk easement dedication and authorize the mayor to sign the easement document.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we moved in second to accept the public sidewalk easement from the Alley Entertainment Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Any other business? Did want the city managers to explain one thing. We discussed last week special assessments for Markley Road, and I did have someone question me about that, about the cost and being a current cost, and we may not have indicated that that cost won't be incurred right now. It's a future cost when certain qualifications, certain data points are met. I don't know if you could.
Correct. Yes, if you set aside the special assessment aspect of the project, we anticipate that somewhere around the future, traffic counts would necessitate the improvement of the roadway. And so what we were doing is trying to have the foresight to anticipate that and set in place a funding mechanism where development shared a portion of that cost. So the development agreement that we'll be drafting and bringing back to you for your consideration will have a threshold that once it's met, then the road improvement needs to be installed, and at that point, then, it'd be the cost share that you identified. I think in a part of our conversation, we speculated that could be 10, 15 years or more out into the future, but if we don't set the parameters in place and enter into the agreement when we have the opportunity now, that's an opportunity that we let it get away from us in terms of cost sharing with the development.
So that debt itself would not be something we would expect to see in the next, certainly not in the next year's budget?
Correct. There'll be a traffic count threshold that we'll pay attention to as a basis of when that improvement might be needed. And as part of the bond council's conversation last Monday, she pointed out that, you know, the more development you have and the more people that have entered into a 126A-4C agreement in terms of sharing that cost, the more you have in place. So it might actually be in our best interest to forestall that improvement a little bit until more development happens and we have more developers agreeing to share that cost.
Okay, thank you. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Is that moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you next week. Thank you.
How'd the wedding go?
It was.